The hour is 12:01. The microphone just went live. And I want to welcome everyone. I believe all of our commission members are here. Appropriate staff is here. Interested guests. I would invite those of you that are a little bit hungry, please help yourself because it looks like we're going to have more than enough here.
It's $4.50. All you can eat.
Our topic today in this work session is tax increment financing, TIF. Our presenter today is Mr. James Parsons. Mr. Parsons is, as I'm told from several sources, is, to quote, "the man." He is the expert in, not only in this state, but certainly within this region about this issue of tax increment financing. His reputation precedes him. I don't think I need to elaborate. I think it's well-understood and well-established. With that said, I would like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Parsons and begin educating us.
Mayor and commissioners and guests, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I am Jim Parsons with the law firm of Kitty, Muthin and Cleek Camp. Our offices are actually in Cincinnati, but I practice exclusively in Kentucky. And I will give you a little bit of background there. I am a recovering city manager. And prior to practicing law full-time, I had a 31-year career in local government. That's where I first met Ron and some of the others. But I was the city manager in Newport for about 10 years, city attorney in Newport for about seven or eight years. And then I went over to the dark side and became the county administrator and deputy county judge executive in Boone County. So that was my last public job. But then I was actually, at that time, able to retire and then started practicing law full-time. And since that time, I pretty much practiced exclusively in the area of tax incentives for business and/or development. About that time, Kentucky adopted its new TIF statute. And I was looking at some areas that I was familiar with, that I wanted to market my services to, and got involved with that, and was fortunate enough to involve the cause the city manager in Bowling Green, Kevin DeFabo, liked the fact that I was a former city manager. They engaged me to work on the original project in Bowling Green, the development area there. And then we did TIF projects all over the, pretty much all over the state. I currently serve as special counsel to the Lexington and Fayetteville County Government and basically have drafted and/or reviewed all of their TIF projects moving forward. I don't know if I'm allowed to say this or not, but I did work for the University of Louisville. And their three TIF projects that they developed, they have actually three large signature projects. And that's kind of an example where you don't necessarily have to be a private entity. You can, you know, actually government entities can take advantage of this. And they certainly have done that in building their research campuses. And I've done work, quite frankly, as far, I've been working on three or four projects in far west Kentucky. And I've got three TIF projects in Mayfield I'm working on right now. And so anyway, that's kind of my background. And I've been involved pretty much in this ever since the statute got adopted.
How many, how many projects are you working on in Mayfield?
So I did three different TIF projects. One's still active because it's a state, it's a state project for the telephone community cooperative out in that area. And so they're actually building a research campus at the former religious college that closed. And so I'm working on that project right now. But I did two other projects in Mayfield.
Thank you.
So anyway, just thank you for allowing me to be here. Let's talk a little bit about tax increment financing. And I'm going to go into some tips and some other things you might want to deal with as you relate to developers and some of those type of things. TIF is very common, common tool, tax increment finance. It's been very common on our surrounding states for years. We also practice significantly in Ohio. And almost every project there has some type of TIF overlay in some of those downtown development projects and things. How it's done per, by state might differ, but the concept is the same. And Kentucky had a long, a kind of, not a great history with TIF. Their original TIF statute was declared unconstitutional because it allowed school taxes to be pledged in the TIF. And so then they re-adopted the statute, finally in 2000, they adopted a new TIF statute. And it was flawed a little, in a little bit because it kind of, it definitely favored Louisville, quite frankly, because there was a two-step process. You could, it allowed state TIF projects and state pledges of TIF dollars. But they primarily could only be done in, at that point, Louisville. So there wasn't a movement on to re-adopt the statute so that projects in other areas of the state that might otherwise qualify for state revenues could. So the 2000 statute, 2007 statute is the one we've been following. And that's basically the framework I'm going to talk about today. But there's a number of projects in downtown Louisville that use TIF. The downtown Louisville Marriott Hotel, Yum Arena, and Churchill Downs expansion. You might hear a lot about Yum Arena. Please don't let that taint your view of TIF. There's a lot of issues with that particular project, and it was done under the old act, but it's still a nice project. There's been a lot of financing issues to deal with that. But don't, don't let that color your view because sometime, you know, on that. But we're operating under the act, as yours, the 2007 act, as it's been amended. What is TIF? Basically, tax increment financing. And if you look at the statute, you don't even see the word "tax increment financing" or "TIF." You'll see "development areas" or "local development areas." But basically, TIF allows a city or county, and it has to be created by a city or county. They can't, the state can't create a TIF district now like they could under the old act. It has to be created by a city or county, or those city or county working together. And basically, it allows the incremental increase in taxes that might, after a district has been created, the incremental increase in taxes to be used to support development within that area. And so that's kind of the, that's the theory behind it. When you create incremental revenues are the revenues generated from the site minus the revenues that were generated from the site at the time the TIF district was created. And so that's the concept. If you, if you created a TIF district and you're generating $100 the base year, at the end of, at the next year, you're generating $200. Then you have an increment created of $100 that can be created, that can be pledged to support a project. When you actually set up the TIF district, you determine what those old revenues are. And those old revenues are not pledged. So for instance, if a city created a TIF district, it would continue to receive those old revenue numbers. And so then if it pledged the increment to support the project, it would get whatever percentage of the increment you decide to keep, plus the old revenues.
Just a quick clarification question. When you say to support the project, what would define that, just for everybody?
A project could be really any capital investment within the TIF district that creates economic, benefits economic development or tourism. And I'll go, I was going to go in a little bit more detail on what that is.
So instead of the project, a project?
A project. And so a project could be basically that the city decides to enhance the infrastructure within a district that makes it more susceptible to development. It may need sanitary sewers. It may be need something like that, or some, it might be site amenities that might be necessary to make it more development, be susceptible to development, or allows you to encourage development. A project could be an actual construction project that a developer has where you're providing some direct incentives to that project.
Thank you. I apologize if you're getting.
No, no, no. I will, I wanted to say this to start. Interrupt me if you have questions. Don't, it's better to, so everybody understands that we move forward. I have no problem with that.
Don't worry. We will.
Okay. But anyway, there's this concept of baseline, old revenues, or the revenues from real estate taxes and occupational taxes at the beginning of the district. And then the increment is whatever is increased over that amount. This is what an eligible project can be. And it's very, very broad in Kentucky. It's basically any project that encourages economic development or tourism. And it includes housing. So you could actually have a TIF district that only promotes housing, and that's all the only, only project within that. Housing, any type, almost anything. You can't think of probably anything that isn't, wouldn't be included within that definition. So as long as the projects within that area are encouraging economic development or tourism, it can be, it can be incentivized with, with TIF in some way. One thing about TIF is what it is and what it isn't. TIF is not a, TIF doesn't, is not a, doesn't create any property restrictions. It doesn't create new zoning for an area. It doesn't place any new taxes, except in one area, I'll explain a little bit later that it could. But it's not, it's, all it does is it doesn't create any tax exemption. So the property owners within a TIF district will not even know they're in the TIF district. They'll pay taxes exactly like they would. If they're in the, paying county taxes, they'll pay that to the sheriff. If they're paying city taxes, they'll pay it to the city, however they're doing on that. So the taxpayer has, really has no idea. It really just is a mechanism to allow the local government creating the TIF district to use a portion of those taxes that are generated to promote projects within that. Local revenues. And this, there is a distinction of how the revenues can be used. And this is something that go, this more is a policy question than a legal question, quite frankly. Because local TIF revenues, when I'm talking about local TIF revenues, I'm talking about city, county, real estate taxes, occupational taxes, county occupational and real estate taxes, or special district real estate taxes, not school or fire districts because they can't participate. Basically, it allows you to provide an incentive or use those increments to pay for project costs or redevelopment assistance. And, and there's two types of TIF districts. From a local standpoint, the, how you use the increment is not any different on the local side, whether it's a local development area or a development area, which I'll explain later. So what that means is that you can use that TIF increment, if you choose, to do public infrastructure improvements, to support those type of costs, or reimburse those type of costs. It actually allows you to even utilize those revenues to reimburse a private developer for some of his private costs. So that's, so it can be used very broadly. Now, from a policy standpoint, you may make a decision that if you're, if you're working with a private developer, that you won't, you won't reimburse their private costs, but you may reimburse maybe some public infrastructure costs as it relates to that project. But that's a policy decision. Legally, you could utilize that, you know, that, you know, you could actually reimburse private costs. I can give you an example of that. I, I've done the incentive work for the Ark Encounter project in Williamstown. And so we have a TIF district set up, the city and county are both participating. The city and county just reimburse the developer on an annual basis 75% of the incremental increase in taxes. And it's not, it's not required to be accounted for to infrastructure or anything. It's just a direct reimbursement of project costs.
If I may, I know that all this has been vetted legally in every way possible. But we've always been under the impression that as a municipality, we can't, we can't favor a private entity, a for-private entity.
You actually, in a sense, you can. And let me explain why you can in that circumstance. And I don't want to get involved with any different legal opinions you may have received. But you're requirement, you're required to spend public tax dollars for a public purpose. Okay? But promoting economic development is a public purpose. So therefore, it doesn't mean it has to be for a public project necessarily. There's a, there's a myriad of cases out there that basically says, if you, you can actually spend public tax dollars even on a private, for a private business, if it's for a public purpose. And so you'd have to have a nexus there, like, you know, there, but just, I can provide you with some case law on that. It's pretty broad. An example of that would be what they did for Toyota. The state basically bought the land, gave the land to Toyota and everything else. And there's been a series of cases that indicate you can do that. You could, you could build an industrial park if you want to, and then at some point transfer that off. And so legally, you can do it. Now, from a policy standpoint, you may want to limit how you use the revenues. That's totally up to you. That's because, because don't, but from a legal standpoint, as long as you're expending the tax dollars for a public purpose, and if that purpose is economic development, then you can do that.
So this is what they're doing in Lexington to assist Dudley Webb?
Yeah.
In developing CenterPoint?
Yeah. And the CenterPoint project, what they're doing there, and that's an example that the TIF increment, state and local, that's part of that. But the monies are actually pledged from the city and the state to the parking garage. So they, even this, even though they're building a private development on top of that garage, the TIF increment is going into that, into the garage. So that's how they're using those funds. Now technically, they could, could have paid, at least the local revenue could have even paid for some of the private building costs. But that's, but that's an example where the local government is saying, "We'll support this project, but this is how we'll support it." And so, and so the public garage is being built. In fact, those bonds just closed on that. And so there's a lot going on. Yeah?
Are you suggesting, Jim, that the language for TIF is a little longer than the statutes were relative to public, public's general?
Yes, they are. Yeah. But they all still follow the legal theory that it's, it's tax money for a public purpose. So I think that doesn't mean you want to give every private entity out there, you know, pay for their costs, but under a certain circumstance, you can justify. And again, local revenues can be used for private costs related to the development in addition to infrastructure needed. And again, this is an area in Kentucky is much broader than other states. Like if I was doing a TIF project in Ohio, I could only use TIF to reimburse public infrastructure type costs. The other side of the coin is redevelopment assistance. I told you what project cost is. Basically, it's any cost associated with the project. But this, this again, is local revenues. Local revenues can be used significant, so much broader, so that you, and it can be, this is the definition of redevelopment assistance. And that kind of, you can use it for soft costs, like you might have created a TIF district, but you want to, you have a downtown development area TIF district or something. You want to use money to promote that area or market the area. You can use TIF to reimburse those type of costs. You can do interest buy-down programs. You can do facade improvement programs, things like that. Or you can subsidize the interest that a private developer might have within the TIF district. You can actually pay for some of the extra service costs. And this is not, this is all local. They don't, you can't do this with the state side. But if you, for instance, if you created a TIF district and you needed some enhanced safety, you know, fire or police services or something to maybe enhance the level of services within that area, you could actually pay for those increased service costs within that district using TIF revenue. So it doesn't necessarily have to just be used for capital costs. So it gives you an example of that. You can actually use it if you want to. The city could actually be a developer. You can actually, you know, have an area. You can buy the land. You can subdivide it and everything else, and you could be the developer of that property and things and, under that circumstances. I don't normally recommend that. Cities don't make good developers generally. And there's a lot of other factors that go into play. But I'm just saying, that's how broad the statute is under how you can use, use that local revenue stream. How incremental revenues can be used? And there's basically two approaches to, if you create a TIF district and how they can be used. One, you can actually, if you choose to do so, if, say you have a project or a development area TIF district, and you decide to issue debt that's going to be supported by the incremental taxes generated, you can, you can use a bond approach. And so you can, you can, those TIF revenues can then be pledged to support whatever cost project that is. And that's an incremental bond approach. If you choose to use that approach, it, sometimes cities may not want to be the issuer of those bonds, but just be aware that KLC has a program itself, and it can issue increment bonds for these projects. Now, the security issues, and we're not going to get into the detail on that today because, just because you can do it that way, doesn't mean that that's the way to go. But bleep on that.
But to be clear, the incremental financing is used to leverage and pay for larger dollars via, via debt, via bonds?
That's correct. Give you an example, you mentioned CenterPoint. In the CenterPoint situation, there's a series of debt structures that support that garage and that project. One of these areas of the debt, one, one of those is, is a increment bonds that were issued by KLC on behalf of Lexington. And the incremental taxes that are generated from state and local governments are going in to support that debt. Now those are bear, what we call bear increment bonds. And what I mean by that is, they don't, the city of Lexington did not pledge its full faith and credit to that debt. It only pledged that whatever increment is generated by this project, we'll use that for the project. So they're not, they're not, it's not a, it's not a true debt of the city in that circumstance. But, and, and that's, but you, that's part of that CenterPoint financing is actual increment bonds. The Summit project, if you're familiar with that, they used an increment bond approach there. And a portion of that debt is supported by incremental taxes from the state and, state and local government. The other approach is, is that it's a kind of a pay-as-you-go approach, that as the increment is generated, you may have projects you want to reimburse from those incremental taxes generated in that circumstance. So as they're generated, it's a, you might either reimburse costs or you may pay for costs as you have the money. And it's more of a reimbursement type approach in that circumstance. You may have a developer, for instance, that you're agreeing to pay certain costs for as part of his development, and you have an agreement in place with the developer that you'll, like we did with ARC, you're just reimbursing annually the increment that's generated to pay a portion of those costs. There's no bonds in that case. There's no, you're not participating in the financing at all. The developer is totally responsible in that case for the financing of the project. Or you may create a downtown TIF district where you might generate a small amount of increment that might grow over time. And then annually, as that money is generated, you can use that increment to pay for costs within that particular area. So, but the bond approach or the reimbursement approach, or a combination, is normally what happens there. Again, incremental revenues can be used to support the overall development of the area, like, you know, setting it up for development, or roads or infrastructure that might be needed to make an area susceptible for development, or to make some improvements. Or it could be to support a specific project within the TIF district. What can be pledged? And this is the, technically speaking, you can pledge 100% of the incremental taxes from occupational and payroll taxes and real property taxes. That's the city, that's the limit. And this county can do the same thing if there's a county payroll tax within the area. It can, it could be, you can pledge 100% of that. Special districts can pledge 100% of their real estate tax increment generated. So this, but again, school districts may not participate, fire districts may not participate. And school districts because of the Constitution, fire districts because they have a good lobby. And so they, they excluded themselves from that when the statute was being adopted. The other thing you can do, and this really only works depending upon the, what current payroll tax rate you have within the district. If you can legally actually assess a higher payroll tax up to 2% within the district that only applies within the district. And so if you have a project, for instance, or you're trying to create some new, additional revenue over and above your regular taxes, and you can technically impose up to a 2% payroll tax. Now that's not in addition to, I don't know what rate your payroll tax might be. Well, you could, you could add a, basically a small amount, but it wouldn't make any difference here. But in those areas where you have no payroll, or one unit of government doesn't have a payroll tax at all, that can be a tool that can be utilized and things. And so just be aware of that. Ark Encounter is a good example of that. I hate to keep coming back to that, but it's, in that case, neither the city or county had a payroll tax at all. And so when we created the agreement there, we basically asked the county, city, when they created the TIF district, to impose a 2% payroll tax. So all of that 2% payroll tax that's generated can't, is going to help the Ark Encounter because there was, there was nothing, needed to be shared back with the city because the city didn't have that revenue source anyway. And so that's an example of how that can, that can work. And so we've done that a couple of times.
So if Center College came to us and said, "We want to build a multi-level parking structure." We could use that means of financing?
Yeah.
And get some form of payroll revenue, whereas now we're getting nothing, correct?
Well, I don't know what, how is Center College, aren't you getting payroll taxes from Center now, or is it in the city?
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay. So that negates that.
But if they were, on the other side of the coin, is if they, if they had a new project or an area they want you to help with, and it's going to generate, that new district is going to generate some increased taxes, yeah, you can do that there. So, but you can use the increased taxes that new area would generate, and you could help pay for some of those costs.
We're not going to be able to do increased taxes anywhere because the city, county, and the county is working.
Yeah, so in that case, it won't help, but you still, you know, that's right. That's right. Because it does act as an offset to your existing tax. And the other negative you run into there is it creates a situation, if you have existing employees within the district, they will pay the old rate, and the new employees will pay the higher rate. And so you have to be careful with that. So a good example of where this works, though, I've done a couple of projects in Boone County where they have an 8/10 of 1% payroll tax, you know. And if, Boone County actually is unique because most of that county, even though it's an urban county, most of the county is unincorporated, and most of the development's an unincorporated area. So if we do a TIF district in Boone County, we can, we can put on a 2% payroll tax. So 1.2% goes to the TIF district, and the county still keeps its 8/10. So it isn't losing anything, but it's a way it can incentivize projects. But, but anyway, if you're already at about 2%, it does make a lot of sense there. You can do assessment bonds too, within a TIF district. And the one thing that is critical here is that if you have a lot, a number of taxing districts, the fact that the city might create a TIF district and pledge its tax revenues to the district does not bind any other district. So if you choose to create a TIF district and you want to then get the county and some special district participate, you have to individually, they have to, they have to approve individually. So anything you do can affect them. So in there, the maximum term of a TIF district pledged can be 30-year pledge. And so in addition to that, most communities would never pledge 100% of their increment, unless there's some special deal. Even though you legally can pledge 100%, it doesn't make sense to do so unless there's real, very special circumstances. Because ultimately, you need some of that increment to, for city services. The other thing about it is if you are creating a TIF district and you're working with other special districts or the county, the amount, the percentage that you pledged, and the county pledged, doesn't have to be the same. Or the term of years doesn't have to be the same. You may decide to have a longer-term pledge, but it can be separate. I personally like the fact to keep the length of time the same. It's easier to deal with a percentage difference. But one of the projects in Mayfield, for instance, the city, county, and several of the special districts participated, but the extension district is new. In fact, it's a brand-new extension district with taxing authority. They elected only pledge 15 years under their, under their real estate tax. So that can be done, but, so just be aware of that. In northern Kentucky, it's real common, if a city creates a TIF district, it's kind of, the three counties have kind of gotten together and agree among themselves that their pledge is going to be 60% of the increment. their pledge is going to be 60% of the increment. And so, I already, when I'm setting one up in Northern Kentucky, I kind of know, we have the city recommend, but then I know the counties will participate generally at There are two types of TIF districts. I think we're primarily going to look at the lower one here for what you may want to do, but there are, there is a, there can be a TIF district for undeveloped land, so it doesn't have to be a blight of the area or anything like that, and it's limited to 1,000 acres per county per year. It's very easy to establish. You have to have basically a public hearing and adopt an ordinance, and that's pretty much it, and adopt the pledge agreement. And the other one is called a development area, and the real distinction on that is that a development area is technically, for the most part, is supposed to be the redevelopment of previously developed land that meets at least two factors of blight. It's not necessarily true blight, but it has to, you have to, when you're creating that type of TIF district, you have to show there are certain factors within the TIF district that meet certain of the statutory factors there. There are exceptions to that. Developers have got the law changed several times, and the reason they got the law changed is because on the state side, and the big difference between these two types of TIF districts, is that a project within a local development area is never, will never qualify for a pledge of state revenues, no matter how big it is. And so, if you're a developer and you have a project of a certain capital investment, it behooves you to be in a development area TIF district, because then you have the potential of accessing some state revenues for your project. So, there's been a series of exceptions to the statute where you can have undeveloped land, as long as that, as long as it has a project within it that, for instance, has a 5,000-seat arena, or if it's close to a military base. So, there was a Fort Campbell exception, there's one for Georgetown exception, they created an exception to that. There've been a series of exceptions to that statute. Even on one of the projects I'm working on in Mayfield, we got a statutory amendment last year to allow some undeveloped land to be part of that development area TIF district. But primarily, the development area is supposed to be within a redevelopment of previously developed land that meets certain factors of blight. It is, it is limited to, it's actually, it's, the maximum size is three square miles, which actually is bigger than 1,000 acres, that's 1,920 acres. And it's a little bit more in-depth of what you have to do, and I'll go into more detail on the development area side, but you have to do a development plan, and that's the first step. Then you have to, you basically adopt, and after that have a public hearing, and then adopt what we call a local participation agreement, which is actually the official tax pledge agreement, and I'll give you a little bit more detail on that. The nice thing about that is if you have a project within that development area that meets the state criteria, they may be able to apply for participation and access sales taxes, income taxes, and those types of state taxes. And that's the CenterPoint example, and several of those projects in Lexington were created, basically the developer brought them to the city, and it was really, they created the district, but it always had the intent of applying for the state taxes, so it was kind of designed around the state program. When you create a TIF district, you basically adopt the TIF district by ordinance, and that ordinance will generally approve a, what we call a tax pledge agreement. That will be either a local participation agreement or a local development area agreement, and you also designate the area involved. If it's a development area, you also approve a development plan. The city then will also designate the agency to be the administrator of the TIF district, the entity that responsible for the administration implementation of the district. That doesn't mean they have to do the project, but they're the kind of the overseeing agency there. And so, that's part of the process. So, if the city wanted to create a TIF district, you'd want to determine, you know, who is the best entity, or what's the best entity to do that. It could be a city department, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a separate agency, it could be either a city department, like your finance department, or your department of administration. You can create a separate corporation, you know, you probably have some Chapter 58 financing corporations, you can use that approach. You can designate the industrial authority, or some existing corporation that might be involved with economic development as the agency, but you would be, that's part of the process and part of the, some of the issues you'd have to decide as you move forward. What entity is the best entity to handle that. In Northern Kentucky, because we often have city-county participation, we often create a mechanism for, regardless of whether it's a city department as the administrator or not, we create some mechanism to allow the, any taxing district that has, participates in the TIF district to have some input in how those monies are expended. And so, and so, really, that's really a political decision you would need to make on those issues. But sometimes it helps if you're trying to get other taxing districts to participate, for them to participate, but they have some input in some of the process and things. Once you create a TIF district, you don't have to activate it immediately. Let me explain what activation is. Activation is the first day of the calendar year you start, use, for the calculation of the increment. And so, so for instance, you can create a TIF district, say effective January 1 of this year, and you, but you don't have to activate that until January 1 of 2022, I guess, if my math is correct. So, you, and what that means is that, you know, during that four-year period, you know, you're basically just keeping the taxes, they're flowing exactly like they, you intended them to flow and things like that. But then, once you activate it, then at the end of each year after activation, then whatever you've agreed to pledge into the TIF district is then required to annually be paid over into a special fund. So, if you, if you created a TIF district this year, and say you activated January 1 of this year, at the end of the calendar year 18, if the TIF is activated, whatever increment might be required to be paid, you know, the various taxing districts would collect their taxes, then there would be, you know, the agency then would kind of calculate if they agreed to, say, pledge 80% of their increment to the TIF district, then the agency then would kind of calculate that, and then, you know, the city would pay its increment into a special fund, the county would pay its increment into that special fund too. And anything not paid into the special fund would just be part of the general funds of those entities.
You know, situations where TIF districts have been created but never activated?
Yeah, there's been some situations there. But in reality, what happens, if you don't activate officially, it activates by operation of law. So, for instance, we've got a big project in Newport that the city hasn't officially activated that, but it's more than, that TIF district's been in operation for over 10 years, so that it's kind of been dormant, but it officially activated itself after four years from the date it was adopted. So, that, what that means is, is that you're losing years of what might be available. So, since the project hasn't moved forward, when that finally gets started, you may only, even though the pledge was originally 30 years, there may not be any, there might be only any real increment of about 22 or 23 years of actual increment being generated because the project didn't move forward. So, and there are, there are ways to adjust that if you need to. And if that, I'm sorry, Ron.
That's all right. Developers, in a TIF district, may vary in size and the size of investment. Whether it's a large area, and I guess I'm wondering, does the TIF legislation give ultimate flexibility to the city government? So, if you said, determine what, do you have a, what?
Yeah, it does, and.
I guess my second question is, within the district, can they vary the amount of revenue that they pass on by type of development or something in general?
Your pledge to the development area is going to be the same. So, for instance, you pledged, say that you created a TIF district, and say you just pledged 80% of your increment. That pledge is to the development area. You may have an individual developer in that district, that doesn't mean you have to give that developer 80%. You may, you may give the developer a smaller amount for his specific project, only means that there's, there's more money stays in the special fund to be used for other things. So, you can, you don't have to, and that's the other thing about it, just to be real clear, the taxpayers within the TIF district don't determine how that money's spent. That's your decision. Now, you may have a developer, development agreement that says how that money, it might be a contract with a developer, that you're going to reimburse a certain amount, but ultimately, those are, those decisions of how the money's spent's up to the local government, and then you can make a decision. So, if you have a project within the TIF district you've created, it's going to generate a certain amount of increment, you may elect to, an incentive that, you know, doesn't meet the pledge that you've made to the overall area, but that just means that that project is generating excess revenue for the rest of the development area. I don't know if I made myself clear or not on that, so.
More quick question.
Yes, sir.
Just being overly cautious, what, is it possible if you create a TIF district and then something unforeseen happens, things or circumstances change, can you uncreate?
Yes, you may. The only thing you cannot do is if you've pledged the tax revenues to a TIF district and debt has been issued to support that, you can't, you can't terminate the district until that debt's paid or it's been taken care of in some way. So, that's right. So, as long as you've fulfilled all the contractual obligations that you have for that money, yeah, you can terminate the TIF district. And that could be, example of that could be, in some of these districts, the, you have a pledge amount, and it's capped at a certain amount for a specific development. If that's all you intended the TIF revenue to be, to use for was that particular deal once, even though you might have had a 20-year pledge on your TIF district, say. But say you're 15, you capped out, and so you paid everything you agreed to pay out, you can, there's no reason why you couldn't terminate the TIF district at that point. The real reason for the delay in activation on these, in the four-year timeframe, is a lot of times these are tied to some type of private development, and at the front end, when all the planning and everything else, and, because a lot of times these TIF districts are created at the front of the project, even before zoning, and everything is totally in place for it, so there might be some time to get the project, you know, ready for construction, the financing in place, and things like that. If you had to activate it right at the front end, you again would be losing, there'd be years, there would be, there would be no increment generated, and so, it doesn't help the project at all. This is, this is the development area TIF district, is I think is what the city's most probably likely to be doing in its downtown area, but these are the conditions within the development area, to have to meet two of, two of, two of, of seven, of these seven factors. Most attorneys can get you to meet most of those pretty easily, and the reason, so I'll be frank with you on that. So, basically, you have to show there's been a substantial loss of, you know, activity, residential or commercial activity within the district, that's one of the factors. If it's a lower-income area, 40% of the area is, are low income, and there's a definition in the statute of what low income is. 50% of the structures are deteriorating, there's been a substantial abandonment. Actually, if you meet, like, some of these factors, if you meet one, you're going to meet the other ones. So, there, the one that always exists, there's inadequate public improvements, or infrastructure support development, you have, that's a gimme on any TIF district you do. And then there's another one, if there's a special, unique situation that affects that area and the ability of the city to develop, you know, that's another factor. So, those are the factors the TIF district has to meet to be a development area. It's only two of those, two of seven. If you actually are applying for one of the state programs, the mixed-use program, you have to actually have three of the seven factors. To do a development area TIF district, you must do a development plan, and that's the first thing that's done. And basically, the development plan is not a, is not a zoning plan. It's basically a plan that kind of describes the area, describes the conditions within the area, describes why the factors within the area that the area qualifies under the statute, and indicates the basic plan for redevelopment of that area, and then also basically puts together kind of a finance plan as to how you're going to, why you're imposing the incremental, the district, and how you're going to use those funds. And you're not limited to that, but that's kind of what's in the development plan. And the first step for adoption of a TIF district is create, prepare the development plan. That development plan would then, as one of the final things in the development plan, it would go to your planning commission, and your planning commission would need to certify that the development plan meets the definition, is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Now, that's not a zoning process, and so this is where sometimes planning commissions get messed up, because they think it's a zoning process, but it really isn't. It's just a kind of a statement that they review the, what the proposal within the development plan, just to determine that it does meet the comprehensive plan, so.
I would assume that that development plan needs to be created in conjunction with a certified planner?
No, it does not. I write most of them myself. I mean, really what happens is that when I'm doing a TIF district, it's almost turnkey when I'm doing the district. I draft the development plan, all the documents, I will get, I have a template of what I use and to meet the terms of the statute. I basically get information from the city as to the area they're talking about, or it might be a developer, but I'll get information about the area, the conditions of the area. I might have pictures of the existing conditions in the area or something like that. I'll draft it and then, and put it together. So, again, this isn't a planning document in that situation, so don't, so that's why you don't really need a, if you want to do a real fancy plan, you can, but my view on that is, I do the minimum necessary on that, and I don't spend a lot of time on that, only because it's a document that's required by statute, but nobody looks at it after you create the TIF district. I can, it's just, it's just one of those things you have to do, but it's, and I don't mean to make it that it's, to not, to lessen the importance, it's just not one of the critical documents in the TIF process, it's just a required document. So, but, but again, I wouldn't use a planner on that unless you, unless you have a planner on staff that's a good writer and could easily put together, you know, put together that. The, how you adopt the development area, and basically you draft the development plan and submit to the planning commission, once that certification is done, then you basically at that point file a copy of the development plan with the city clerk and with the fiscal court clerk, and in that circumstance. And then, then you actually have a public hearing on the development plan itself, and so, and there. And then, again, the public hearing is just a general notice hearing that you would adopt under a general public notice. You don't have to give individual notice to the property owners within the TIF district. Again, because you're really not putting any restrictions on their property or anything, it's just a general notice public hearing like you do for road, your road, road funding or whatever. At the same time, when you're working on the development plan, concurrently would be drafting a local participation agreement. And that local participation agreement is the pledge, a tax pledge agreement. That local participation agreement basically says that within the TIF district, we're going to pledge this particular, you know, certain percentage of real estate taxes or occupational taxes to the development area. This is going to be the term that, for how long the pledge is going to be, with the understanding it could be no more than 30 years. It will also indicate how the revenues are going to be used. For instance, if you want to, you make it very open, that it could be used for just project cost or redevelopment assistance, it gives you a lot of flexibility there, and then you can later make the decision, you know, how the monies are used as they're generated. Or it could be very limited, and some of the projects, we're working one with private developers where the, you're only, you're only, you're basically pledging to a specific project, you may indicate that our increment can only be used to support these specific infrastructure costs or these needs of the project, and you can cap those if you want to. So, that pledge agreement is pretty much the, kind of the important document, critical document in this, because it sets forth the taxes pledged, how they're going to be used, and for the number of years in that circumstance. In addition to that, the normal process here is that concurrently with what you're doing, if you want the other taxing districts to participate, then there's, even when you're in the process of doing this, you would, you would have had meetings with the county, with some of the other special districts, if you think they might participate, to determine whether or not they- whether or not they agree to participate too. And when they, if they do, and they adopt the authorization to do so, then they will actually be a party to the local participation agreement. The normal parties to the local participation agreement are the entity creating it, the agency that you designate, and then any other local government that participates, other special district or whatever that agrees to participate. Those are the parties. There are times, depending upon the circumstance, where I have, if I have a private developer, and the project is for a specific development, I might have the private developer also be a party to the local participation agreement. So, but that is the, kind of the, that's the, the document that banks will review, and, and, and everything else on, on, on pledges of tax revenues and things. And then basically, you adopt, the city would adopt, when it created a TIF district, if it elected to, to do so, it would adopt the, the map of the area, and the description, it would adopt the development plan, and it would adopt the local participation agreement and authorize its execution. It, it would also then designate in the ordinance, the agency, that's the implementer of that. And if other taxing districts participate, they don't create the TIF district, they would simply authorize their participation in the pledge of tax revenues, whatever they've agreed to. So, locals, special districts simply have to adopt a resolution, authorizing its execution. The county would have to adopt an ordinance, or if, for some reason, the statute requires, if the county participates with a city, and it has to adopt an ordinance. Now, this, the same process, actually, if a county was adopting the TIF district as opposed to the city, then the county would have to follow this process, and then, so. I'm going to cover a little bit the state programs, because if you create a development area TIF district, not a local development, but a development area TIF district, and it meets certain criteria, there are three state programs that you can apply for to support development. And this really will only apply if you have a real development, like a project, a developer, who wants to do a, a development project, like a Center Point, or, or something like that. And again, it could be, or you have a, some, some, some other entity that's going to make a significant investment, that's, that, that needs these type of incentives. But, there are three of them. The one, the Commonwealth Participation Program for Real Property, Avalorum Tax Revenues, I didn't create these names, but somebody did the state. But, the other one's the Commonwealth Participation Program for Mixed-Use Redevelopment, in blighted urban areas, and then the other one is the Big TIF, what we call Super TIF, is the Signature Project. And, each of them have their own criteria. Basically, a real property tax program, you have to have a minimum capital investment for the project of $10 million, and it must represent, it all represents new economic activity. No more than 20% can be retail, and actually, the state, you can, state, you can get a pledge of 100% of the state real estate taxes for a 20-year period, to reimburse. Again, this, this is where we're getting to the how, more limited how the revenues can be used, to reimburse approved public infrastructure costs. So the state revenues will not, will not, you can't, the developer can't get reimbursed for its private costs, it has to be approved public infrastructure costs, on that. And again, financing costs can't be covered either, so, with state revenues. The mixed-use program is probably the most common program. It's a capital investment of $20 million, has to be a mixed-use program, and there's a definition in the statute. We got the statute amended last session that makes that easier for other areas of the state to qualify as mixed-use projects. Lexington and Louisville had a preferred definition, but we got the statute amended to, you have the same definition of mixed-use now as Lexington and Louisville have, so, all across the state. This is one that it's, there's a, it disfavors big-box retail, so if you have a mixed-use project, but there's a big-box retailer in that, it doesn't qualify. So it doesn't, the idea is that they didn't want to use TIF to support Walmart, and Kroger, and, you know, those type of, of entities there. Again, the nice thing about this project is you can recover 80% of the state increment from sales taxes, income taxes from new employees, and state real property taxes. So, but again, the minimum capital investment's 20 million, up to $200 million.
Is it like the Louie Chauvin Center there?
Yeah, Summit, I think, was a, well, I believe was a, was a mixed-use project and things. Center Point was a signature TIF, and I'll explain that there. The project in Bowling Green was a signature TIF project. This is a 20-year deal, again, state revenues, you can't recover, you can't recover financing costs. The other side of the coin, and all the state programs, they're, they're only set up as a reimbursement-type situation, so that, that doesn't mean you can't use increment bonds, but what happens is, the state revenues would flow from the state to the agency, and then the agency could pledge, if the bond approach is used, the agency, once those tax revenues are received from the state, can then pledge those to a bond structure, if they, or to reimburse other The Signature Project is, you need $200 million of capital investment, and, and basically, you can get 80% of the state increment for up to a 30-year period. And there are some ability to, to, to not only just infrastructure costs, but you can get certain land costs included with the state program here. Again, it's, it's a nice program. The negative on the state programs, and this particularly shows up on the Signature Project program, is even though your state TIF program might be activated, and you, you're moving forward, you don't get any reimbursement from the state until you first have expended, in this case, $200 million. So, and again, all the state programs are set up that way, that, that you, you can get a reimbursement, but you first have to pay capital investment of, of whatever the program you're applying, or that's why the mixed-use program is a little bit, is, is the preferred one for most developers, because a lot of these projects, they can finagle the $20 million capital investment in some way, but they can't, getting that $200 million, and not being able to get any state increment reimbursed until you receive that, is, is pretty significant. The other thing about the state process, too, just for, is the, even if you have a private developer, which you would have if you, if you're going under the state programs, the private developer is not the applicant to the state. The applicant to the state is the agency. So if you designated your finance department, for instance, as your agency under the TIF, that finance department would be the applicant. And the contractual relationship between the state and, and the flow of TIF revenues is between that agency and the state, and so that's why, not the developer. Even though the developer has to do the project, that flow of revenues is the state will reimburse monies back to the agency, and then, then the agency then can, can use them for the private development. So that's how that process works. Again, the other thing about it, on a Signature Project, is you can get an allocation of increment to pay for the financing costs associated with the project. And basically, like this, local participation agreement at the local level, when you, when a state, the state approves a state incentive, they enter a tax incentive agreement with the agency, as it relates to that specific project. And the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority is the agency that contracts and handles these programs. The other thing about TIF is that they do work well, the incentive, because a lot of projects need more than TIF, or they need more, they, they may have a layer of incentives that might be necessary. TIF works very well with, with different type of tax credits, historic tax credits, new market tax credit programs that might be available, especially in a downtown setting. If you have a Tourism Development Act project, that, that, that meets, so you can recover sales taxes for that project, you can use that, or other grants can, you can use that also, and there's no conflict there. Arc Encounter is another good, a great example of that. Arc Encounter was built on undeveloped land. It was basically a farm area. It didn't qualify for state TIF, because again, undeveloped land doesn't qualify. But, so we created a local TIF for the local side of the incentive, but Arc Encounter was a tourism project. So even though it didn't qualify under the state for any, any state assistance under TIF, it did qualify for state assistance under the Tourism Development Act, so it is recovering under, over a 10-year period. It's the sales taxes it generates to pay for tourism, as a tourism project. So, that's an example of how you can work these projects together.
What project? Was that?
The Arc? Arc, the Arc, yeah.
It did not receive state financing?
It did, but not through TIF.
Okay.
What happened is that, again, it, it wasn't eligible for state TIF incentive, under, one of those three state programs, but it does meet the redefinition of a tourism project. And so as a result of that, it is able to recover a portion of the sales tax it generates over a 10-year period to cover some of its development costs. So that's the state incentive that goes into that project. But I'm just an example of how these programs can relate together. The one area of conflict you have is with the Kentucky Business Investment Program, because the reason that's a program, especially if you're in a county that's not enhanced, or, or whatever, and most of the time, if you, if you have a project, or an end-user within the TIF district that is eligible as, for the state incentive, the Kentucky Business Investment Program, and for office-type jobs, or where, industrial or whatever, you have to match it. If you have a local payroll tax, you have to match a portion of that state incentives with the local payroll tax. If you've pledged your payroll taxes within the TIF district, to, to the TIF district, then there's nothing to match the state KBI program. So when you're drafting those, or putting that TIF district together, if you think you may have projects that might be susceptible to the KBI incentive, that doesn't mean you can't do it, you, you just make, you accept from your pledge of payroll taxes, what any portion is needed to match the state KBI program. You just need to agree, that's the one area, one incentive, that there is a conflict. If you use TIF, you may not be able to use KBI, and that company may not be eligible for KBI. So you just, you just have to structure it in such a way that you could take advantage of that.
So, so let me throw out a hypothetical here. The county owns Constitution Square down here, obviously a tourism attraction, unique to Kentucky, unique to Danville. If there were to be some development plan to significantly enhance that, could that be TIF-financed?
It could be, as, as long as it's generating new income, revenue.
Right.
It could be, and in that case, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a tourism attraction. It just means that if it was a tourism attraction, then you have another program that you could look at, that might be better than using TIF. You might have a local TIF, but your, your program at the state level may not be one of those three programs that might be the tourism project.
And we have a 501(c)(3) here called the Boyle Landmark Trust.
Yeah.
Who's trying to develop a revolving program. Any way this could be interfaced with that?
It probably could, in a sense, in that you can, if it's providing, say you created a downtown TIF district or something, and maybe, you know, the emphasis of it was historic preservation. Going back to the definition of redevelopment assistance, you might, could, for instance, you could pledge the incremental increase in taxes within that district, maybe to support what that entity's doing, you know, it, you know, because you can, you can use that pretty broadly. So there, there could be some opportunities for doing that, depending upon the circumstance. Where you run into issues is that, some of these downtown districts, without any major development, their incremental increases are going to be pretty small over time. Doesn't mean you can't do it, it just means that it may not, it may take a while to have any real money that would be generated. But that would be an example. For instance, the trust, you could probably create a TIF district, and where, and then, and then funnel money to that group as the marketing agent for that, as part of, I mean, that could be legally done, in that circumstance. So there's a lot of different ways you can use it. It works better, and you can see more immediate results, if you have an actual project, that, you know, your developer's going to build this, a hotel, or a developer's going to do a commercial project, or build housing, you can see a real immediate return, and, and, and you can see a real impact. But that doesn't mean you couldn't do something over time. But, and again, there, in your downtown area, you could do a TIF overlay, but then those businesses within the district, if they're deciding to do it, could still take advantage of historic tax credit financing and things like that, that might be needed for their private developments. Some of the issues to consider, the bond approach, we've talked a little bit about that, whether or not you want to issue increment bonds or not. Increment bonds, up till now, have been pretty difficult to issue, if they're, if they're bare bonds. What I mean by they're bare, they're only supported by the increment pledge, because there's no, if that project doesn't get built, there's no increment to pay that debt. So most underwriters, if you, most, most time, that, that doesn't mean you can't do that approach, it just means that the interest rate you're going to pay, you're going to pay for the lack of security on the interest rate there. And although some developers might, may prefer to use that approach. Again, KLC has a program that can work for that, if you chose, chose to use increment bonds. Developers, depending upon the circumstance, and I'm not saying this should never happen, but developers, if they're doing a project, may want you to issue increment bonds or something, and you provide some security for that, that doesn't mean you can't do that. You know, that's one of those areas you need to ask a lot of questions, if you even decide that. I would usually, unless there's very, very, very special circumstances, I would never recommend a situation where you're backing bonds like that. The only time I think that really makes sense, is if the project is, 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 is very secure, or it's a project you would want to do anyway. You know, as a part of a general project, you, you might, you know, that would make sense. If it was some, some public project within the TIF district, where you want to maybe get the project jump-started, there might be some opportunities to, for the city to use its debt capacity to do that public project, with the idea that ultimately, you might be able to get that repaid with a TIF increment. But, you know, but I would be very careful on that issue. Bowling Green has a really nice project, and it's downtown, but it's kind of got, it, 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 not that it shouldn't have done what it did, but it, you know, I'm just saying that there, you can get, if, if your financing depends upon the private development getting done, you know, you better be sure that there's a lot of guarantees in place for that to, to be in place, and you're dealing with a very, very strong developer. The other issue, I think some of the things you need to look at is some of the policy questions. If you do a TIF district, how should the revenues be used? Some communities might say that we, well, we won't use them for any private cost. I mean, that has to be done, if there's a private development within the TIF district, unless there's infrastructure costs that we would support, you would support. You may make a policy decision, only use that money for the infrastructure needed, pub parking, you know, sanitary improvements, or amenities, or something. That's, that's, that's all policy issues you need to think about. Don't assume that every project within the TIF district requires an incentive, and, and just because you have a TIF program, you know, don't, don't set it up that every, every business within the district, in that district, that meets certain, these factors, automatically gets something. You need to look at those projects within the district and determine, you know, would this TIF increment be used better to make overall improvements of the area, or does this business actually need the incentive? I think you should ask that question anytime you grant incentives. Do more cost-benefit analysis on that. I think it's always good if you have a, if, especially, that, when you're creating a TIF district, if a city's doing it, you, if you can partner with your county government, it strengthens the whole deal. And only because, you know, local rev, as you know, local revenues are a very small part of the taxpayer's total tax bill. Most of it goes to the feds and the state. And so, if you can create a mechanism where you're working together with the city, the county, and your special districts, you'll just be more successful, because there's a larger revenue flow at that point. So if you're able to do that, I would always recommend that, that situation. The other issue is that, just as a political issue, if you, especially if you want the special districts to participate, the county judge generally appoints all the members of these special districts, with certain exceptions. And so, they may have more of a, have the better ability to get the special districts on board than you as the city would. And so that's just a practical situation. And so that's just a practical situation. I know when we were doing this project in Mayfield, it was very helpful. Judge Perry there in, in the county was very helpful getting the library, extension district, and health district on board. And a lot of it's because he, you know, they're the, he's the appointing authority. Just to remember, we, I think we can ignore the 2%. I think you're at 1.95%. I think that you don't need to worry about that. When you're working with a private developer, especially if you're looking at state participation, be sure to have a development agreement or some agreement in place that sets forth clearly obligations, and especially who's going to pay what costs. And, and because especially, and I'll go over that a little bit on the state side. The state application process is expensive. I mean, there's an application fee, and most of those programs, you have to pay for it in a consultant, that's $50,000 to $70,000. There's administrative fee that's due after the tax incentive agreement. And I would definitely have, if you're doing a project and you're applying on behalf of developer, be sure that developer's covering all those costs. And just, that's just a, just a practical matter. There's no reason for, if you have a, developers coming in with a private developer, if that developer doesn't have the wherewithal to cover those type of costs, then it may not, probably is not a developer you want to be in business with anyway. I mean, just be aware of that. And give you an example, in Lexington, I might do work directly for Lexington, but, you know, what happens Lexington, when they do a TIF district for a developer, I review the documents and stuff on behalf of Lexington, but they have an agreement that whatever I charge Lexington, they basically reimbursed back from the developer. And, and that's just part of the deal. And they've got an understanding that any out-of-pocket costs for applying for these projects and stuff like that are covered by the private developer. Let's talk about, any questions up to this point? Any more questions? I'm going to go in a few, I bet, just some more implementation steps. And a lot of times on incentive deals, whether it's KBI or TIF or whatever, they're developer-driven. A developer basically has a project, they're trying to put the financing together for that project, they'll come to the city or county or probably industrial authority, and they'll say, you know, what can you do to assist us with this specific project? And, and those, those basically deals, whoever's the reviewer of that just needs to review that, determine whether or not, does it, does it fit within your plans? Is it a project you want to support? Does it bring value to the city financially or otherwise? And it always doesn't have to bring financial value. There are certain projects that might bring esteem or something like that, that might help long-term for a community. So it doesn't have to be just a true financial cost benefit. There could be some reason why you would support a project that might be more, more, you know, I don't have the word that I want, but just have other reasons directly financial. It might be something with center that, that would really, if you could help them, or you might want to be, if it's an opportunity to work together and things like that. I'm just saying, that's an example. So it doesn't have to be a direct financial return. It could be other reasons why you want to support it. I would always determine, try to determine how, what kind of developer this is. Does the developer have the capacity financially and otherwise to undertake the project? Some of those type of things, I think, are important. And that's tried to, the more you are required to do, the more that issue becomes important. If it's something you're just reimbursed in a certain amount of taxes to that developer or participating in KBI or something like that, that's one thing. But if you're, if you're, if that developer is a critical part of your overall development downtown, I think you need to know who you're doing business with. And then, then you can then determine what level of assistance is justified and how that should be used. There's other types of projects, and I think this, you're in kind of the process right now to determine that right now. Say it's an area of the city that you want to have redeveloped, or you think it should be developed or whatever. Those are more city-driven projects, where you don't have a specific developer at hand, but you have an area that might be eligible for, susceptible for certain incentives or TIF or whatever. And though, I consider those more city-driven projects. In those cases, you know, you might just try to determine, how do you get that project developed? How do you encourage a developer? How do you do certain things to get that project done? It could be that you just, you know, make some investments in the area and get it ready for development and things. A lot of communities with that situation will undertake a request for qualifications process, where they will actually go out and they'll first undertake at least some preliminary planning or concepts internally, and maybe even involve some community input as to what this area should be. Once they've kind of identified that there, then they might develop a request for qualifications and, and things. And so, and the request for qualifications, under that scenario, you know, I've kind of missed a little bit of that. But basically, the preliminary plan would talk about the existing zoning, concepts, what you think you might want to see there, what could work for the community. There's a number of things you might want to deal with. But then you could go out then for qualifications. You may want to pre-qualify developers, or you may want to open it up to the development community and see what you have. Some of the things of the request for qualifications you could do would be identify as much information about the site as reasonable. What's the existing zoning? What's the future land use? What are the site constraints? Are there some things within the area? If you know certain issues? Now, one thing I would say, I should have put this on here, I make it real clear in the request for proposals, that the information is only informational. The developer's responsible for verifying the accuracy and stuff, because you don't want to warrant the certain, those, those things. But, but you could provide a general description of what the development the city would prefer, and then you could ask, and the reason I said "general" and I highlighted "generally" or "maybe willing" on the slides is, too often, I think, communities develop a plan for an area, and then, then they, then if a developer comes in, they're tied, if that plan is that specific, they're tied to that plan. And they just cannot, even if it doesn't meet the market, or, you know, there's, there's nothing, it's almost like if a developer comes in, it does meet exactly what that plan has, you know, you won't consider it. So that's why, from my view, I think, I prefer to give the council as much flexibility as possible. Don't tie yourself to a plan that's so specific, it may not be, you may not be able to get, there might be a developer that could, could do that project. So give the, maybe, give the developer, describe generally what you're interested in, some of the issues about the site, and then allow the developer, you could ask the developer, give us your vision of this site. What are you able to do? What do you think this site can deal with from the market standpoint and what other? Some developers are very, have very unique abilities for urban projects or downtown projects and things. So you may get, you may get a project or an idea back from the developer that will work for your community, that you actually like, that you didn't even think about at the front end and, and things. The nice thing about that, when those developers come back with their concepts, at least they're probably have thought to a degree that this project is marketable. I can get this financed. I could get this to move forward with certain conditions, certain things.
Did they do TIF financing on the redevelopment of the courthouse in Lexington?
Yeah, it actually is in the TIF district, but they don't think they used TIF financing on that. They had some other options. When the TIF district was created, if there's, if there's money over and above what's needed for the CenterPoint garage, it could be used for that courthouse. But they, so, but, but, but it can be done in the future, but no, they didn't use TIF financing for that. Did I talk, talk a double talk? It's in the TIF district, but they're not using that specifically for that project right now.
So 10 or 12 years ago, whenever the parking garage was built, it was, it was financed with conventional bonds. That would have been, that could have qualified for TIF financing?
Which parking garage are you talking about?
It's over on Third Street. City-owned.
That parking garage that is the original TIF district, if it's already built, you can't...
Right. No, 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 that's not what I'm asking.
Yeah.
If we had created the TIF district, could we have used that as a mechanism to finance that?
Yes, yes. Yeah, you can. So in that, in that, even when the original Lexington TIF district for CenterPoint was created, the courthouse was one of the projects that was listed for, eligible for, for TIF reimbursement. It's just, as a practical matter, the amount of increment is all going to go to that parking garage, probably, that's under CenterPoint. And so even though it's eligible, you know, those monies won't flow to the, couldn't flow to the Fayette County courthouse until those other projects were paid for.
When you go back, could you go back really quickly to value, bringing value, not necessarily financially?
Yeah.
Could that be green space?
Yeah, it could.
Or enhancing a park or green space?
Yeah.
It's not necessarily going to bring jobs?
That's correct.
But it could bring the value like that.
Yeah, I should have addressed that. It doesn't have to be, one of the site amenities, you could do something for a site amenity. Say you have a private project that's going in an area, and your contribution to that project may not be anything for that specific project, but you're going to use a TIF increment for that to develop site, you know, either streetscape or a park or something that's going to add value to the project. So you can use it for that, too. The negative on the green space issue, only I'm really promoting green space, it doesn't generate taxes. So that if, you have to have another project that's going to pay those costs. But that doesn't mean it doesn't, that's, that's an example of, of using the TIF revenue not for, not a return back to, directly to the, to the private project or so, or the top project that's generating the taxes. But you're using that to create an amenity, the park, the green space on the site, to make it more attractive for development. And then most of the time, when you have one of these state programs, it's very common for part of the infrastructure that is included in that, to go with the state's reviewing, part of the infrastructure may be, you know, certain site amenities, certain public amenities, public spaces and things like that. That's very common. So it's not always just for the private development. It's very, it's not unusual to have a certain amount of public amenities that you're trying to pay for using the TIF increment.
Like that community or negative, is it?
Yes, it could be. Yes, you can. Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Under the, you sit here in the slides, the question, function.
Yeah.
It's your library, a little bit, I wonder if it's going to be included here, you actually might sort of, or, 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 or.
Well, I'll give you an example there. If you have, in your RFQ, you may have, you may require the developer or want the developer who's ever selected to develop, have some public process for the development of this project. What normally happens on these deals, you have a, you have a request for qualifications, you go through that process, and depending on how important the public process is, you may, you may want to have even a public process and ultimate selection of the developer. But usually, as part of the process, once you then negotiate a development agreement with the developer, the developer usually will have a general concept plan for the development at the front end. And you may want to, as part of the development agreement, to, ultimately, you'll approve a final concept, too. But to get from the preliminary concept to that final concept, there may be some type of public process you want the developer to go through to, to, so that the, everybody comes together that this is a plan and this is what the community can support. A lot of times, it depends upon how important the site is to the, to the city, how important would a public process be? There are certain sites that are, just those sites that kind of identify the community that you would want, in those situations, you would want to have a much more of a public process than maybe otherwise would require. But that's what we're really talking about. We're working on a project, I'm actually with a private developer on that one, in Ludlow, where the city has a site, and is very clearly in the development agreement and term sheet, we started negotiating, leading up to the development agreement, there's requirements in there that the developer engage a public process for presenting his concepts and his development ideas and everything to the community as part of that project. Again, the request for qualifications, I think it's important to understand, ask the developer to provide their experience, examples of the projects they might have done in that circumstance, especially those projects that relate specifically to what you're interested in. You might have a developer that's a residential developer that has no real experience doing downtown projects and stuff. So I'm just saying that they, certain developers have a better, have a more of a unique style. Certain ones have a very good reputation with historic preservation, some of those type of things. And I would, I would have the developer provide a very, doesn't have to be a detail, but at least enough information as to what that developer sees for the site in some way. And then, you know, preliminary schedule for the project and some other things that would make you, you understand or get a good feeling about the project and how it can move forward. What I would not do, and this is what some communities do, they do get caught up in pretty pictures. And I don't, I mean, I mean, they have a developer who has a beautiful concept, a beautiful plan, and so everything then focuses on that pretty picture and pretty concept, and they forget about, number one, the experience and their financial ability and all the other stuff. And so you basically buy into a pretty picture that can never get done. So, you know, I would be, I would focus, on any developer I would select, I would focus more on their experience and qualifications and financial ability and, and not, not that the plan isn't important, but I think that's, especially if you're going to really partner with that developer, because it is a partnership. It's, I think it's important to be comfortable with that and have, have faith in the developer. The one thing there, the development agreement that you might have with the developer after the RFQ process will kind of set the tone, the, the relationship with the parties, who's doing what, what incentives you might be willing to grant, under what time schedule, those type of things. What the developer has to do and when, the deliverables, things like that, how you will go from a concept plan to a final plan, what kind of process you'd have there. The developer, most of the time, will want a due diligence period, because the developer is coming into this, they have to get financing, they have to look at the site, they might have to do soil testing and other things relative to the site as part of their due diligence. So there'll be a due diligence period relative to that. And, and so that's part of that development agreement. The one thing I will say, and that's why I bolded it, developments never, ever are exactly what you envisioned at the front end. They will change. And so if you're going to get into this, and especially working with a specific developer, understand, it isn't because the developer's trying to pull a fancy one or whatever, it just, things happen. And so just be aware of the fact that if you approve a development plan for a specific project, it's going to be a little different at the, at the end than you thought of at the front end. So just be aware of that and be ready to make adjustments if they're, if they're warranted. The other aspect about it is timing. And when I was city manager, my elected body always looked at timing in terms of their term of office. That's just the way they thought of it. Even though a development might take five to 10 years to deal with, it's just always there. And so the timing issues, it often doesn't work that way. We all like to have it done to meet that and stuff like that, but, but just be aware of the fact, timing, these things are complicated and does, do take time to get done. I would always include a provision for default and termination and things like that if a developer doesn't perform. And then that's basically in my presentation about, about the TIF and some of the things you might want to think about as you move forward in the development. But I'd be glad to answer any questions or give you examples of what's been done in other communities. Yeah.
Do you know it? I want to start with you, TIF, you know, their downtown.
They, I think they're doing some TIF now. What they actually did, they have a unique situation in Owensboro. They actually had a community engagement process and worked with their county and city, and they basically jointly increased insurance premium taxes to cover a big part of that at the front end. So they didn't do some TIF at the front end. They basically said, we're not going to relay, wait for the state to come in and do all this stuff. They did get some other federal dollars, I think, from Senator McConnell and some of that. But they, they basically said, we're going to do this alone, and they used insurance premium tax increases to pay for a lot of that improvement. And so that was a unique situation there. So what they did now, I think they do have, do, they're doing some of the, some, some TIF there, but that wasn't their major driving force. That insurance premium tax actually paid for all those improvements on the waterfront and park improvements, and I think it built the convention center they built there. But that's another example. There are other incentives besides TIF that can be utilized in different ways of working together.
So if, if the city did a development plan and we, we saw a particular need, and the incremental revenues gained would size that particular piece of financing. And if that particular piece of financing was not enough to undertake the project hypothetically.
Yeah.
Could the city, could the city add tax revenues to that?
Yeah, you could do, you can actually, you don't have to use TIF directly. You can, you can spend your direct tax dollars to, as long as for a public purpose, you can, you can do that to, to support the project. You could, you could do what they did on Bowling Green.
But we wouldn't want to do that because that, that, that comes out of the, the city's general fund.
Yeah.
And, and we don't want to encumber that any more than possible.
That's right. So that would be the, kind of a last resort, but if you needed to do some additional incentive to make a project work, you legally could do that. And, and so again, in like, what they did in Bowling Green is a good example of that. And it got into trouble for other reasons, but I don't mean it can't be done. They basically had, where the city actually backstopped a private, you know, the wrap project that kind of wraps around that parking garage they built in downtown. If you ever had a chance to go to downtown Bowling Green, they've done some remarkable stuff there with their TIF. But in that situation, because of the development, could not, would not have, could not have happened without some of this city backstopping, the city actually, you know, backstopped some of that debt in, in there. So, but that's risky, but it can be done.
I've already queried Jody on this, but since you brought it up with Owensboro, yesterday I had the pleasure of meeting with Madison Silver. And Jody, I'd, I'd like to request in front of everybody that his next visit here, let him share what they did in Owensboro, because it was unique.
It was unique.
And there was frankly, the stars lined up pretty, pretty uniquely for them. Good for them.
The amazing thing about Owensboro is they did it at the beginning of a recession, or right during the recession, where most governments, quite frankly, were so adverse to any increases in taxes, they, you know, most governments, you know, you, you, even if it was the greatest project in the world, would not increase taxes for that. But they had the wherewithal to do it. And I think he's got a great story, if you listen to him, and, and how important some of their, that, that norm, that corporation, nonprofit corporation in town was, and helping to develop that, that, that public support for it. So...
And Owensboro has that, quote unquote, deteriorating location.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of deteriorating, that's right, they have the river. And so that's certainly, so, but... They did on some of that, but a lot of the stuff, if you hear what Madison Silver will tell you, it's, most of the, like, none of that money went into the convention center they built. None of that went into the, all that public improvements and things like that. They actually did that on their own, using a combination of, that's where a good example of the city and county with a common vision, working together and, and understanding that if they want to get this done for the community, they're going to have to do it on their own, and they're not going to have, they're not going to rely on other people.
Is a better example of that common vision, working together, obviously Christian County, in terms of their renovation of the parks and trails and all of that. And I think they used the insurance tax for that.
Yeah, they may have. I, I'm not familiar with that.
Huge renovation.
Yeah. But, but there are some things. In that case, they, they each jointly agreed to double, I think, their insurance premium tax. And so as a result of that, it created additional revenue stream to do that project.
Could you go back a little bit to the activation?
Yeah.
I got a little confused about that.
Yeah, it just means that when you, say you create a TIF district, and you created in 2018, the pledge, or pledge of tax revenue, even though you've authorized a pledge of tax revenues, those tax revenues are not, you don't really, the pledge isn't effective until the activation date. So for instance, if you created a TIF district in 2018, and, and then you didn't activate for four years, nothing would be due to the pledge until four years down the road. Now, when you did activate, your old revenue number is what was, it was what it was when you established, you used a 2017 old revenue, but you, you would basically, the first year, so you activated in...
But are you, are you, I guess my question is, not to interrupt you, but my question is, are you, are you collecting that on the front end?
You're collecting it, but you're not, it's not going into the TIF at that point. You're collecting the tax revenues.
So you're just kind of setting that aside?
No, it goes into your general fund. Until you activate the TIF, nothing goes into the TIF fund. That's what I'm saying.
From a accounting point of view, they could, they could set that aside.
Right. So that's basically what you're doing, is kind of setting it aside until you actually start.
You're not really, and let me explain that. The only time you set the money aside is, is the money that's done after activation. So that if you have a, if you create a TIF district and for four years you haven't activated, any of that money generated within that TIF district is going to do your general fund. You're not obligated to pay that into the fund. Now, once you activate, say you activated in January 1 of 2020, you know, your first payment to the TIF district would be based upon, would be paid in 2021, based upon the calendar year 20. But the previous years, you're, there's nothing that goes in the, even if you're generating a lot of the new increment, that's your, that's general fund money, that's not TIF money. Because it's only TIF money once you activate at that point.
Right, right. Okay.
So that's, it's, so, did I answer your question there?
I think so.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
When it comes to the agencies that administer this, it sounds like it's a lot of work.
It really isn't. The, the biggest problem is, is how, if it's a larger TIF district, you have to keep track of the taxes within that TIF district and things there. Covington, for instance, we did a 500 acre TIF district. And so in that rate, you know, trying to keep track of the parcel numbers and taxes within that district was a little bit more work. But once you get it set up, it can be done. And so at the end of every year, you do this on calendar year basis, you basically look at all the parcels within the TIF district, you kind of determine how much taxes are generated from that TIF district at the front end. And then actually, annually, the finance departments in the various agencies will kind of calculate how much from these parcels were, were taxes generated and, you know, and that's how it's done. So the other thing is, is that where the work comes in, is if you have a development, making sure certain things happen. For instance, a developer or a business within the TIF district, you may want to get them to get a special business license within the district. Let me explain why that's important. Say you, say you have a Wendy's or a McDonald's, and that's to be in your TIF district. You may have another McDonald's in town, right? So unless you, unless they're getting their own ID from in that TIF district, when they're reporting to the city their payroll taxes, they're probably reporting on a consolidated return for all their McDonald operations in town. So it's better to, the more you're able to make those individual businesses in the TIF district have a specific license that makes the occupational department, finance department easier to track, that's an example of that, where you have a business that might be having several locations in town. You know, you just want to, you need to think about the administration side on that somewhat.
So clearly, this is not your average run-of-the-mill general obligation bond, or sewer bond, or water bond, or school bond. So with some of the nuances in this, it seems to me that maybe the best approach is to say, we want to do X.
Yeah.
You tell us whether we can do it and how we do it.
That's right.
So that most people do it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so if I'm working with the developer, we'll put their concept and things. Most of the time, most communities are set up that even though the documents would authorize bonds, most of the time they use a reimbursement approach on working with developers. Center Point's an example where they did use a bond approach, but those are bare bonds. I mean, the only, the life incident has no responsibility for payment of those bonds. All they're saying is, of the increment that's generated, that we've pledged to the district, we'll let, we'll, we'll apply that to payment of those bonds. So life incidents, it's not, it's not a general obligation, it's just, and you can do that. You can issue debt without, without it being against your, your, taking your credit. So, so that's, or you can use it as a reimbursement approach if you choose to do that. A lot of them are set up that way. Developer totally handles the financing, they're totally responsible for it, your only obligation is to annually pay whatever the increment is back to, to that developer.
Let's, let's say Atkinsville down the road has identified a, an area they want to apply for a TIF grant, and it meets all these qualifiers. How do I go about deciding what I want to put in this area of identified for the TIF grant?
You would decide, if you're the developer?
No, I'm part of the city.
Okay, well, you... Part of that would be, it really would depend upon more from the city's standpoint of, if you're deciding what goes in there, it'd be more, what do you want to see in the community? What do you want to, to see, what kind of project and things like that in that circumstance? What you're willing to support using tax revenues, things like that? How you think that site should develop? Are you going to do certain things within that district to, to promote the ability of that site?
Are you talking to me as a developer, or you talking to me as a, as part of the city?
I'm talking to you as a city official.
All right.
If I was a developer, I would come in with the city with a concept of what I believe can be financed.
Correct.
And I would say, this is what I propose for this area. As a developer, this is what I want, this is, this is what my bread and butter type of business is, this is what I can do, this is what I want to accomplish, this is why I need assistance. And then as a developer, I would indicate, this site has unique circumstances, it might have environmental issues, it might have some special circumstances, it might have a, a gas line, a utility line running through it that needs to be relocated. I would probably, as a developer, give you some special reasons why this, this particular project is either so worthy of a city, it's such a significant project, or there's certain unique circumstances as to why it should be justified that you give up some of your tax revenue to make that project work.
And I think that's pretty easy then, the commission can vote yay or nay based on
That's right.
community input. But I, I want to hear you talk about, as a community, as a governing body, we're getting ready down in my town over there to develop a, an area. And I'm trying to help decide, I want some input about what's best for the community in that, that location.
Well, what you have to decide on the side of the incentive, and whether you're going to grant an incentive or not, you have to decide, one, how important is the development of that site? How long are you willing to wait for it to be developed without some type of incentive? How long, you know, do you believe it would ever be developed without some type of assistance? And, and if it is developed without some type of assistance, will that project be what you want? Because a lot of times, a developer could come in and, and meet your zoning code and be entitled to get an ability permit or whatever, but it may not be a project that you want. So when you have, when you do partner with the development, you have a little bit more control, not just a zoning control. You have, since you have some money in the skin of the game, you have a little bit better ability to control what the project is, what it looks like. You may have a development that comes in that the developer can get it financed based upon a certain level, but the developer then says, if I get some insistence, incentives, I can get, do a nicer project. You know, that might be something you want to think about. It, does it make sense to provide some incentive to a project? And I hope, am I answering your question?
Well, you, you are, but let's take the developer totally out of the picture.
Okay.
We're getting ready to set up a, an area.
Yeah.
We've earmarked an area in our community for this type of financing.
Okay.
And everybody on that side of the room are potential developers. And they might all have projects in my mind. As a community, when we set this up, shouldn't we be looking at what we want, or what we think's appropriate for that piece of land?
Yeah, I definitely think we should be.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
I learned yesterday that Owensboro, who I think exemplifies the model, as I see it. Owensboro first undertook a professional development plan. This community
That's right.
is in definite need of a plan, whether it's downtown, whether it is to develop areas for housing. This community is in need of a plan. And it, it was a process, it was lengthy.
Yeah.
But what they got out of that is what you see down there.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Because I think what your concern is, it, and I, and I agree with you, somebody comes in, they say, I want to do this, and they take a particular space.
Yeah.
That may be the prime spot in town
Something.
that we should have reserved for something else.
Right, that's right. Even on this request for, if you look at the, the pre, the pre-step for the request for proposals or qualifications for a development, is that process you need to determine as what's good. It could be a full plan. You might have, you know, that's, don't equate that with a development, a development plan that are a TIF situation. It may be a more detailed plan that, that the community has adopted, you know, for a specific area that you want any future development to meet. TIF then can be a tool to implement that after the fact.
Sure.
But the development plan under TIF is a very limited type of concept plan. It's not this overall community vision for what you want.
That's right.
So you may want to, you may want to engage in something like that, or your planning commission might be able to do that, or whatever.
Hey, I just wanted to get digged back on that. I guess that's what I think is going to be unique here in Bowling Green was, we had developers all over the community, ready to go with their fees.
Yeah.
And they wanted that tool. And yet, some of these prime spaces, like Mary was described, were kind of really book-in pieces we wanted for the University of the City. So then, there was a master plan that came in, a consultant was brought in to do an 80-block master plan, and design guidelines, establish, create this community vision. And then we started to execute the pieces one developer, kind of one block at a time. And I guess the unique thing I see here is, we've all probably had good ideas about a block, an area, a lighted area, but unless there's developers in this community that are ready to say, hey, I've got this idea, how are we going to be able to figure out the market-related issues? And we may all say, hey, hotel, hey, housing, but yet, I don't know that as a planner even myself, what will work here, and what developers will come to the community without probably some long-range plan, sort of giving these market relationships.
That'd be, that may be something you want to engage in. You know, what I would, what I would encourage you, if you go that approach, be sure whoever you use on that plan understands the market. Because I've seen a lot of these downtown plans come back, they're great plans, they're beautiful, everybody loves them, but they're just, they can't, they're, whoever did them had no concept of what the market would allow or whatever. So just be careful on that. Not that you shouldn't do it. I think every community should have a master plan for the development, especially those areas that are the critical areas for the, for their development.
And we don't have a master plan. We've got a land use map, but it's not a master plan.
And then the master plan in Bowling Green flawed because it assumed all these condominiums that are just naturally populated, you know, higher budget. And again, that plan had to be revised several times, because none of that stuff would be possible.
Yeah, when I was city manager in Newport, we built an office building. We had UDAG grants and stuff like, we were able to get an office building built. And once we did that, every project we wanted after that was an office building. So we envisioned, have you ever been to the Levy and the Aquarium and stuff at all in Northern Kentucky?
Oh, yeah.
That, our first vision there, because, you know, I was a city manager, I know where the payer, where the money comes in, it came in from our payroll tax. So I envisioned the whole riverfront to be this sea of office. And so for a lot of time, we marketed and we worked on this concept, and, and a sea of office development, and it never happened. We had one office building, that's all we were going to get. And then finally, we decided, well, maybe we ought to get somebody in that can, can talk to us about what the area will really support. And so that's when this concept of this entertainment concept came about, and, and things like the Levy, the Aquarium and things flowed from that. So that's an example, though, of, you know, our, my plan, you know, just because I was looking at thousands of office jobs paying lots of money, and, and that was what I would love to see for the city, but in reality, that could never have got done. I didn't mean...
So this community just spent $86,000 developing a strategic plan. And in it, there's a volume of market analysis. Y'all want to comment on that?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. So we've got, within that, June 2017 plan, target industries, abundance of goals, key result areas, objectives and actions. And we did that because we weren't a lot. He wants a zoo, you want a restaurant, I want a barbecue joint. Can we get together as a community and row the boat and say, so when I hear us talking about our plan, I'm sitting here going, okay, we got your plan, and we got that plan, we got a lot of plans. And this sounds like it helps us create some of... And this sounds like it helps us create some additional texture.
Yes.
I want to go back to what maybe my question out of yours was, was, so how many TIFs can Boil County have?
You can have, technically speaking, as long as you don't put more than 20% of your total assessed taxable valuation in a TIF district, you can have, you know, you can have several.
So, can the city of Danville have a TIF, can the city of Perryville have a TIF, can the county of County have a TIF, can the county of Battle Hill have a TIF? So, we can have multiple TIFs.
Ben can have one.
And they might be used for different purposes, and it depends upon the circumstance. Each city, as long as more than 20% of the total assessed valuation. Now, quite frankly, some of these areas, it may be, and I'm not familiar enough with your county to say, but you could put a TIF district in, and you may not ever, it may not mean anything, because unless it's an area that's susceptible to development or new developments are going to come, just having a TIF district doesn't do anything.
That's right.
But, the only thing is, TIF is a tool. Once you have a concept of how you want to move forward, it's a tool that allows you to provide some incentives to make that project happen.
And I have one more follow-up to the Beast's question. So, I've launched a TIF, and until I trigger whatever we're talking about...
Activate.
It goes into general fund. Can I spend that money on operational needs while I wait for the TIF to turn?
Yes, it's general fund dollars, it's not in the TIF side yet.
When the TIF triggers, and I've spent that money that's been, the word I would use, if I were y'all, I'd be holding it in reserve, or it's set aside, but do you have to pay it back?
No, it's legally not in the TIF until the TIF is activated. It's like saying that in calendar year 2020, at the end of calendar year 2020, whatever we pledged to the TIF is going to go in the TIF for that year, but the previous years are, that's your money, that's your...
Not grandfathered.
It's not grandfathered in, no, it's not. So, and so, because that's why that activation date's pretty critical, it just means, up to the activation, nothing goes into the TIF on that circuit. Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to read, but I saw in some of my research, there was a lot of possible negative consequences for TIF. I mean, to me, it almost seems like there's a no-brainer in a lot of ways, but could you talk about what some of the consequences are?
Yeah, the one, the biggest negative consequence is that if you pledge the money to the TIF district, it's activated, you're obligated to set that money and only spend that money within the TIF district. So, if you have, so for instance, and so, it's not available, whatever you put in the TIF district's not available to pay for services outside the area. You'll, if you research it, you'll see there's a group in Northern Kentucky that always brings up this California statute, which, why they talk about the California statute, I have no idea. But in California, this is where you'll get some negative stuff online. In California, they had a process there that you could create a redevelopment TIF district. And it could just be, in these new communities, can actually do all these undeveloped areas. And they could pledge 100% of all the tax revenue generated from that area to support the TIF. Then, the area developed, and then, in California, those districts took all the revenue. And so, there was no money then for schools, or some of those type of things. So, that's an example, that cannot happen in Kentucky. But that's the example a lot of times you'll get.
Is gentrification a problem that you see?
Well, gentrification's a problem from a policy standpoint, more than, where, there's no question about it, gentrification will cause a relocation of low income a lot of times out. I mean, it's an area that, you know, a lot of times what happened, of course, is the downtown areas and stuff, were the really nice areas at one point, and people moved out to the suburbs, but when they start coming back in, you know, that's, you know, that causes a relocation issue. And, you know, that's really more of a policy issue, how important that is. Some communities, the larger communities, Lexington and Louisville in particular, they have, they're more concerned about that type of issue, so they may have, some of their incentive programs may require a certain amount of low to moderate income. But, that's a, you know, we had that same issue in Newport. We had, when we, East Side, we created national historic districts and local districts, and we've put a lot of money into that area, it did cause a relocation. And so, but that's a policy decision the community has to deal with.
So, what this really screams to me is, it's time that we did some serious, long-term, professionally-done planning.
We've already done that.
Yeah, I think there's some different types of plans, Mayor. I mean, there's the normal land use plan, there's your comprehensive plan. If you have a specific plan for an area in mind, most, sometimes you don't need a real, exact plan like that, but depending on how large the area is or whatever, it might be helpful. Again, the reverse side of that is that sometimes you get so caught up in the plan, you don't get the project done, and that can't happen. You know, I'll give you an example of that. City of Union, just where I live, real close to that, created a Union Town Plan. They wanted to build, you know, Union was a small area on the fringe of this big growth area, so the planning commission came in and developed this whole concept of the Union Town Plan. Well, it can't get built because, again, it was, the plan was so, you know, they were almost like they were creating a city in this suburban area that was never going to develop that way. So, that, a lot of that property is set vacant, simply because no developer can meet the requirements of the town plan because it didn't make any sense when it was done. So, I'm just saying that's, you can get caught up in that, too. But I think anytime you have a good concept and good idea, even if it isn't an official plan, the biggest issue is have a nice input process, develop, you know, where the community can come together and support a concept there, and then move forward and try to get that implemented.
In my assessment, like what you just said, what's...
I'm just curious. I saw in an international city and county management publication, that the TIFs nationally were the largest single type of financing tool that cities use to redevelop.
There's no question about it.
Counties to a lesser extent, but cities primarily. But I guess I wonder, in the Kentucky experience, have any cities created TIFs that have been non-productive or non-activated, or, in your knowledge, has that frequently occurred?
Yeah, I did one in Fort Wright, and give you an example of that. The other thing about it, remember, TIF in Kentucky is new. So, most of those projects have been done for a specific development. But I created an area, more of an area, what we call an area-wide TIF district, a TIF district that was for a larger area, not for a specific project. Fort Wright decided it wasn't necessary, so it repealed it. I think it's got rid, it got rid of its TIF district in that circumstance. There are some TIF districts in Lexington, for instance, they did a TIF district for a distillery district that never was really, never, it was a nice concept, it couldn't get off the ground. They basically repealed that. They had another TIF district in downtown where the developer wasn't able to perform, so they repealed that. So, you're going to see that go on when these, that's why there's no problem if you create a TIF district for a development or a developer, and that developer doesn't perform, there's nothing that says you can't, you know, reconsider that decision and then repeal the TIF documents and things. So, that is going to happen.
Well, probably adding to Ben's point, I think it's time we think outside the box. And this, to me, is outside of the box from what we've done in the past. Well, obviously, we've never done one of these. So, while planning is important, while we are planning, we need to think outside the box.
I will tell you this, that incentives are being granted in areas and for developments that you never would have thought that would, communities would approve incentives. I mean, since the banking crisis and everything else, and where it's more difficult to raise equity, or the banks don't take as big a piece of a deal as they used to, these leveraged type of deals with TIF or other type of financing is becoming more common. So, the fact that you might be in a community that has never even given us incentive for development at all, ever, and it's happening. I'm working on a project, I don't know if you're aware, Fort Thomas, Kentucky is probably the premier residential area in Northern Kentucky. It's one of the oldest areas, there are beautiful homes and everything else, and the school district is one of the best in the state, and, you know, and so, it's just a really nice area, but they're working on, you know, they've never done incentives before, and so they're working on some incentives now, you know, and they would never have thought that they would grant incentives for a project. Or they would, they would think the school district was so great that nobody would ever need an incentive to move to Fort Thomas. But I'm just saying that because of where we are in the financial side, and not that the, it's just, there's just other, there's just, it takes so much to get a project done, whether it's additional equity, or it's some type of situation. That's why you have, projects often have layers of financing. They have the regular conventional financing, they may have TIF, they may have new market tax credits, or it might be historic tax credit or credit project. It isn't because these developers just want to get as much as they can, it's just that it takes that type of concept, or different layers to get a project done. It's more and more complicated today than it used to be.
Does that pretty well wrap it up for now, folks?
I'll make one more comment, if you don't mind. Listening to all this, I think you're right, Mayor, with probably having a plan, but also, I think, a coordinated effort to find out what other people are doing. You know, the newly-developed board for the EDP is set up with some key players, center college, hospital, et cetera, and we have a new owner of the building, the Gilcher Building down at Hub. So, you know, I think if the city commission were looking at a TIF district and wanted to try to pre-describe what we want in that district, we ought to know what the plans of some other people are, so we're not stepping on each other and it fails.
Yep.
So, the strategic plan, let's not forget how many humans we touched in that process.
That's right.
And if y'all decide that the city wants to adopt a TIF, I agree with you, Eric. You don't want to not understand what we need. If you all haven't spent time looking at this guy named Roger Brooks, Downtown Destination, the Heart of Danville sponsors a bunch of his stuff. It's the most awesome stuff about how you bring activity and vibrance to develop economically home in downtown as a city. And I've been working with Heart of Danville, sponsor some of his educational collateral, a lot of ask Jovi to put multiple user membership in next year's budget. But what I saw, as a Downtown, I'm sticking to Downtown Merchant now, not as your EDP chair, but what I saw was what, to Mike's point, we haven't agreed on what is our thing. In Bowling Green, it's...
That's right.
...how to go. They're leveraging their...
It's making money, or something like that.
That's right.
Owensboro took the...
The way I listen, has never landed on, it's arts, it's eagles, it's canaries. And then you watch him take, basically, starts with a three-block area, and you start building it out to pull people. When y'all talk about Owensboro, that's what they did, they landed on, this is our thing.
That's right.
So, again, to me, when you're talking about, we're missing a piece, it's that unified piece that we can all get behind, so that we're not all yanking it in a different direction.
Say it again, that we can all...
Get by.
That's right, yeah.
I agree.
And that's what my issue is, that we can set an area up and then meet anybody's goals and objectives, so nobody's going to be working for it but us. It's got to be something that the community wants.
Well, I mean, again...
We got something the community wants, yeah.
Fire experience, university, kind of vested interest, medical complex on the other end.
That's right.
The city didn't know what really worked with one, except for building open, viable, walkable green spaces. So, they were in what they will build, the park, the park and rec center, and hopefully everything in the middle just happens. And I'm not sure today it's defined as what we're trying to achieve, except there's a lot of new growth and all the pieces are coming, but...
Well...
The university division and the medical, I'm not sure we'd have figured it out.
Well, they, the one thing they did do is they tied those critical pieces together.
Yeah.
And so, that TIF district runs from Bowling Green, from Western Kentucky University. It's actually called the WKU Development Area to the downtown. And so, they tied, at the bottom of the hill, they got the medical, at the top of the hill, they got WKU, and those entities were pretty critical in the overall concept of the overall development. And they also then kind of creatively used, knew that some of those areas would be developed, and that would generate increment, and so, they kind of strategically designed their TIF district so they could pick up some of those areas, even if those specific projects didn't need incentives, it could be into the TIF district. And so, they also did that to take advantage of the state incentive program, where they were, there's creative ways you can meet that capital investment deal. So, those critical partners, if you have them in town and they're part of this development area you're talking about, having them at the table and being part of the concept and things, you may find out that they're doing a project that you could, that could complement what you want to do, and might make it work together. I don't know. The other side of the coin is, you don't have to create the TIF district first. You could actually, you know, create, do a request for proposals for a development on an area, and then, the TIF might be, part of your development agreement might be that you will create the TIF district after you know what the developer needs. And so, it doesn't have to be done, you could do it, it could be, a lot of these deals are, you know, the TIF is only an implementing item of the agreement with the developer, but it's done after the fact. If the developer does this, we'll create the TIF district, we'll pledge these revenues. So, that could be done, too.
And I think the other thing I like about a comprehensive, professionally managed and executed plan for us is, if we know, if we know what we're looking for, now you can go out and recruit it. It's kind of like the plan we just did for strategic development. If we know where we need, what industries we need to be talking to, we can focus our efforts, instead of sitting back just waiting for something to fall through the door.
Well, I don't remember how many years ago it was, two or three, some of us went to Indianapolis. It was actually some sort of art seminar, something, Mary Beth touched on, actually. Well, we were sitting in a room full of artists. But what I heard from that, and what I took away from that, they talked about art, but they talked about using art with restoration. And they would, and they used TIFs a lot, and this is outside of Indianapolis, and there was a guy there who had done several TIFs outside of Indianapolis in some of their worst neighborhoods. And he went in and took a condemned house in that neighborhood, made it a neighborhood center or community center, brought in local artists, they would have a contest to do a mural in that area, or to decorate the space, or to anything. And I came back from that, and I've asked Ron, I don't know how many times since we went there, why can't we do a TIF? Why can't we do a TIF? We have people in this community, we have the artists, we have, we have everything here to do it. So, I think we just need to do it.
Well, I answered your question, so you go back to the beef, come here.
Absolutely.
It's what we as a community desire, not what city government desires. And until we bring all these little plans together to find out what the commonalities are, you're never going to find out what that is. And we've heard some people spend a lot of money on what's needed downtown, and if that's what's needed, then why don't we all put in our efforts together and work on that for downtown? That's it.
You went to Kyle's first presentation where he showed us the leakage, what we could sustain, what we couldn't. I mean, I'm going to say, you have some of the data, this gentleman's telling us.
He's talking about...
We already have it, yeah.
And what we're missing is what you just said to Beast, which is, can we create the organizing, this is what we're going to try to bring the vibrance.
Yeah. So, when the city gives away all these incentives, everybody in town's going to be happy about the fact that we're giving away the incentives, not, you know, cussing and fussing like they sometimes do.
They're investments, they're not giveaways.
I love...
I understand.
You go out and go, what would we like to see happen in downtown in terms of development?
Yes.
Because we have people that own historic buildings that are struggling. We have...
We have buildings on Main Street, we're...
As long as we understand what might get some legs, then you organize the TIF.
Yeah.
But I bet art would come to the top.
Absolutely, art would come to the top. And you would not believe, I'm still on that mailing list from Indianapolis, and I look at the things that they're doing, and it's incredible.
You keep it up, Commissioner, you're going to find yourself in a job.
I already have a job.
You're going to find yourself in another job.
I think, I think, what would be our next step? I mean, do we need to have a public forum to say, hey?
I think the next step should be, I think the next step should be to turn this over to staff.
to staff, and let staff begin to develop some kind of plan, whatever that is.
I would echo that, and say I'll be in conversation with Jim Parsons to talk about procedurally what we might recommend next for the commission. I think I echo everybody's thought that today has been a very productive discussion, that's added to our individual and collective and community awareness and education and knowledge. But I just want to thank Jim for coming down today and spending over two hours going through a rather complex process.
I understand why they say you're the best. I believe that now, for sure. And again, echo those comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And safe travels home.
Thank you.
Thank you. We never call it an order, do you want to call it out of order? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those like sign.
Those are opposed?